If you'll bow your head, please. Kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight to conduct our town's business. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve and pray that we all are blessed with a servant's heart. Please lead, guide, and direct us in all that we do, that we may always be found within your will. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, council, under item four, new business, review and discuss the June 2 preliminary agenda. And switching to that, you can see what's under the consent agenda. And moving down to new business, item A, presentation of the 2024 North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards. Mr. Wykel.
Good evening. So this is an annual award that the town receives from the Department of Labor. So we'll just, at the regular meeting, we'll just kind of go through each department. We don't want to go through the exercise right now.
That'd be fine. Okay. Item B, fiscal year 2526, proposed budget and scheduling of public hearing for Monday, June 23, 2025.
So this will have the entire agenda, the agenda packet will have the entire budget, proposed budget. And so that will be for council's consideration at the June 2 meeting. And then at that meeting, we'll go ahead and schedule that public hearing for the 23rd for adoption of the budget then. So this, this budget packet will have the manager's message, budget message and everything with it.
Sounds good. Okay.
Yeah, we, we will vote on that budget on the 23rd. Is that correct?
23rd, yep.
Okay. Item C, approval of lease agreement at the Old Rock School with Dream Connections.
So this is a 12-month lease, so every year we renew the lease with Dream Connections. It's been going on since 2012. So this is just July through June, the 2026 lease.
Okay.
Eleven hundred dollars a month.
Counsel, can we move that to consent?
Yes.
Hearing none opposed, we'll put that to consent, ma'am. Item D, approval of resolution for sale of town-owned property at 800 Pymborough Avenue Southwest.
All right, so if you'll recall, we had a offer to purchase on this parcel. We went through, at the April meeting, we went through the resolution for, to approve the upset bid process. So there were some, several upset bids on this. It ended at 148,378.25. It's just under 14-acre parcel, or 15-acre parcel. Tax value on it is 134,490. So we're about, around 14,000 higher than tax value on this offer. So that's where the bidding stopped and it's up for council to decide now if we want to go ahead and sell this property.
Okay.
So that, that will be on the agenda for that.
Are there some contingencies on this offer?
Good question. So the developer, they're going to have to apply for special use permit for their intended purpose for this property, which is, I believe is like some town homes, maybe some single-family homes sprinkled in there. They're all market rate, from what I've been told. But they're going to have a longer due diligence period. We're thinking about 90 days so that they can go ahead and go through the planning board and get that special use permit application completed. So as long as that process goes through, then the complete, they'll have that due diligence done and the sale will go through.
And if that falls through, we'll have to re-advertize. Is that a fair statement?
We'll keep that probably advertised for sale, yeah.
So yeah, really, it'll be just a straightforward acceptance, but it will have a 90-day due diligence period in it?
Correct, yeah.
And they can back out at any time during that 90 days?
Correct, yeah.
Is there any reason to not put that on the consent agenda?
Works for me, if that's all right, counsel?
Yes.
Consent, ma'am.
Yes.
Item E, approval of resolution for sale, I'm sorry, approval of resolution for Maslow Avenue Southeast Sidewalk Project.
So we worked with the COGS staff on this lap funding application that was due on May 2nd. A part of that application, we proposed two different projects, sidewalk projects. One on Little Street Southeast going between Saint Germain, I'm sorry, and Main Street. And then the second one was on Massele Avenue Southeast, which is right out front here between Roderick and Carolina. So of these two projects, the sidewalk on Massele has, is going to be recommended for award. So we have not been officially awarded yet, but the, what's called the Greater Hickory Metropolitan Organization there, they're the ones that go through this process and award. So that's being recommended to them for award. The engineer's estimate for this project is $950,000. It's a 20% match, just like the other lap funding that we had gotten awarded before. 20% match, so that would be about a commitment of around 190,000. So what this resolution is for is for, for the council to commit that funding. So it's, it's not saying we're going to send the funding to them right away, because this is actually a project that's going to take over a couple of years to do. But it's just a commitment that says, yes, we want to go ahead and go forward with this project and we're willing to, to commit the match for that.
So when would the match have to be paid?
It would be paid, spread out over a couple of years. The majority of it would be fiscal year 27, 28.
Yeah.
But we would go ahead and set up the capital project ordinance now, so all that's in place. So that when, as the project progresses, we'd have those funds available.
Anybody else, counsel? That will remain on the agenda for next week. Okay, item F, approval of capital project ordinance amendment, pool structure. Sorry.
All right, so this is a simple amendment to the pool structure project for the dome. We did finally get confirmation, written confirmation, that they are going to give us the $500,000 AP grant that we applied for and had the scope amended for that. So we've got that paperwork signed. So all this is doing is, is basically, when we set up the project a couple of months ago, we were pulling 700 and some thousand out of fund balance to pay for it. So this is putting 500 of that back and recognizing that's coming from the grant now. So we're only going to be pulling 200 some out of the fund balance for this. So that's, that's just making a budgetary correction here.
Okay.
So I would suggest maybe this would go on to the consent.
Counsel, can we put that on consent? Does that seem everyone?
I'd prefer to keep that separate.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay, we'll leave that on the agenda. Item G, approval of design build contractor for product safety buildings. Says council discussion. What's on your mind, folks, or is our manager going to speak to that?
I'm just up here to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel?
I'm sorry, I missed it.
I'm just up here to ask you, answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, the only concern I have, I mean, I've expressed, I've expressed a general concern to everybody, that I just, I don't think, I don't, I don't think I have enough, I have enough information to pick one of them, but I'll go along with whichever one people want to use. The only, the only concern I have is that the only architect that went through the building threw up a red flag. And I think I heard him say that the lower level of that 215 Main Street building was, is not usable. And I, I, I just feel, if that's the case, then the phase one, as we've defined it, with three options, doesn't have three options. So it really only has one option, if that's the case. And I'm sure any, any general contractor we give this contract to is going to get into that quickly, but it just seems to me we ought to run that one down before we pick a general contractor. Otherwise, you know, what's, what's the contract going to be? Is it going to be for three options or one option? So I mean, that's...
Right now, the contract would be for three options.
Right. But if that building won't work, which is one, one of them said, then there's only one option.
I think what they said was they would have to look and see if it met codes, there's a code in there. I think it's eight and a half foot. Depending on what you, what we decide to put downstairs, it can lower or raise the, the ceiling. So it depends on what the use is, whether or not, I think what they said, it would limit the use of the lower half, the lower part of the building. Not that it was not usable at all. I could be wrong. I do know that I've done construction projects in the past that where we did not put a ceiling in, we left everything exposed, we painted it, and we moved the air ducts above the rafters to meet that code. So I, without getting someone in there and doing a lot of design work and research, I can't sit here and say one way or the other.
It's, it's my understanding too, that they're not going to go in to that building and do that work, or look at the fire department until we sign the contracts. That's what that contract would be for. If that's correct.
I think it's, yes, as the attorney says, but I also think you have some options with the contract. I don't think you necessarily have to say, we want to do A, B, or C. I think, if you're asked, in my opinion, I think the best way to do it is to break it down into two pieces, fire and police. I think you ought to do a contract, have the attorney and me and their attorneys and their managers set it up, whereas you have the fire piece, which is design build, and then you have, we want to research options for the police department. And don't limit yourselves to those three options. So we can look at several different options for police to see what's the best and most economical for the town. I think, in my opinion, that's the way you should approach it, is to break it up into two different pieces.
Our, our three options were to build the police and fire together, correctly?
To do what?
Build the police and fire together.
That was one option.
One option.
That's one option.
The second option is to build the fire separate and remodel 215. What's the third option?
No, you, you gave two.
Combination.
Okay, combination, okay.
No, well, it's not, no, the combination is one. Renovating 215 Main Street is one. And then building a separate fire station is one. Those are the three. And the thing is, we cannot use 215 Main Street. Then we only have one option, build a combination. And that's why, you know, to me, I, I just, I wouldn't do it this way. If it, if it were my project, if I were responsible for it, I would get out, get an architectural firm to dig into that and resolve whether or not we can use that building before moving ahead. That's something that should be able to get done in a month, I would think. But I just, it would simplify things and would clarify the contract. When we get the contract, they're going to, they're going to have to price it and, and bid it, and we'll be reviewing the contract with three options. And they're going to be, I mean, the three options are going to be, amount of time they estimate that we spend on each one. But are there going to be three options? I don't, you know, at this point, I'm, I'm not sure we know.
And Councilmember Harvey, I think we're agreeing, I just think we're talking about going at it two different ways. I, what, what I proposed is not to hold up the fire while we're looking at options for police. Every day that we wait on the fire, the cost of construction increases. So if it's a project that this council is determined to see forward, in my opinion, we need to start on the fire as soon as possible, because again, every day we wait, it, the cost of constructions, it goes up. At the same time, I don't think we should limit ourselves to a combo building, 215. I don't think we should limit ourselves to do those two options for police. I think we should give us some time to research some different options to bring back to this council. Like you said, a month or two, but at the same time, not, not hold up the fireside, because the fireside, you're going to have to go through LGC, we're going to have to borrow money. There's a lot of stuff that goes into that, and it's not something that we can do overnight. The police is, in my opinion, a little bit more simpler, because as I've been told, the council's wishes is to pay cash for that and not borrow money. So that cuts out a lot of legwork that staff's got to do to get it approved by the LGC if we're going to pay cash for it. So what I would propose is, kind of like what you said, go at it, but go at it two different ways. Go ahead and, if council so wishes, pick a general contractor with the main focus being on fire, but at the same token, have that contractor with, along with our architect firm, look at different options for police. So instead of having one project moving down the path, you'd have two projects moving down two separate paths. So if we hit a hiccup with one, it doesn't delay the other. I think, in my opinion, I think that's what's kind of been the problem so far, is we're trying to satisfy both departments, and if one has a hiccup, it stops both of them. If by, by separating them and moving them down two different paths, if one has a hiccup, it doesn't stop the other one. Now, if council wishes to continue on with both of them, that's a very viable option, and we can do that.
So if you went ahead and did, got the fire station underway right away on Maslow Avenue, then you don't consider a combination building?
Yeah, we would still consider it, but there's still a lot of, before we start building, we have to do environmental studies, we have to do phase one, we may end up having to do a phase two, depending on what phase one sees, finds. You got to do soil samples, you got to do pre, you know, engineering, all that takes time. So let's say we go out there and the soil, they, is not exactly right, and we have to do other things, that's going to delay the project. So it's still, while they're doing the research on the land at, beside of us, we could be working on designing, or, or looking at options for police. And so if it comes back that a combo building is the best, we still have the engineering part of it, not the engineering, I'm so sorry, the environmental already completed. I have seen environmental take up six weeks. I have seen it, depending on what phase one says, it could add another six weeks. So that's 12 weeks right there, just to get the environmental studies back, that we could be working on during that 12 weeks, we could be working on police, going down the same path.
I like that idea, because we're addressing the problem, we're not waiting on one and holding up another, we're taking action, and we're not, to coin a phrase I often use, we're not kicking it down the road and putting it off again and again and again. The way you proposed, and counsel, one of the reasons we hired this major was his vast experience in construction projects. What's your recommend, and I think is the way to go on this, and addresses the, the situation and the problem?
I think the biggest question council's got to ask and answer is, are you content with the three contractors that was given? And if so, is there one that you're willing to enter into a contract with? The attorney will tell you that any contract we enter into, if we get into it and it doesn't work out, we can, we can get out of it. It, it all depends on what council's wishes are. And we're here to support that, whatever they are.
I guess, I guess the question I have, let's say you start a fire department over here on Maslow Avenue. Then you decide that 215 Main will not work, you're going to combine. How's that going to work? What, what will they do?
So again, before we start construction of the fire, we should and would know what the plan is for police. My thing is, we shouldn't hold up one project while we're looking at the other, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that's going to have to be done before the shovel gets in the ground. If this council says, build a fire department tomorrow, we want it done as fast as humanly possible, I don't think you can safely do that and put a shovel in the ground in less than 12 months. So you're going to have some time while we're doing the backend stuff for the fire department to look at options for the police department. But by doing the, both the projects at the same time, if, like I said, if one hits a hiccup, you delay both of them.
Todd?
Go ahead.
Sorry, counsel. Are you thinking a separate RFQ on the police building?
Uh, no, I think you can, I think you can, can accomplish both of them.
Under the current?
Under the current one. But nothing in there says that you can't start on one side of the, the house while you're looking at the other house. There's no, there's no reason we can't look at the addition while we're looking at building the garage at the same time.
Right. So the current design build RFQ was for either a combination building, putting the police station in the current building, what was, I guess, the, what was it?
215.
Yeah. And then, or building a separate fire department, or I guess, and building a separate fire department. But there's not an option to build a police department.
So my, my thing is, while we look at those two options?
Yeah.
And let's say one of those don't work, we can bring that back to council. At the same token, we haven't stopped looking at the environmental stuff on...
Gotcha.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so you're going to get into the design part of the design build.
Yes.
I got you.
Because there's a lot of back, there's a lot of paperwork to get done, there's a lot of studies. There's a lot of stuff that's going to have to be done before we can put the first shovel in the ground. There's a lot of stuff that's got to be done before this council picks the design. And while we're focused on the design, we can be doing some of the back stuff and get this ball rolling. But again, I don't want to pressure, or, I mean, I told you when you interviewed me, if you want to know my opinion, ask me, and I'll give it to you, whether you like it or not. And I hope I don't offend nobody, but if, we can do whatever this council wants. I, we can operate any way you want. I was asked what, in my opinion, was the best option. In my opinion, I think that's the best option.
Well, while we're in the process of hiring architects too, and contractors to look at these three issues, we, we have this building, which is going to have 2,000 square feet of excess space once the police department moves out. Can we also have them evaluate this building to see if there's something more efficient that we can do with it? Because this, I mean, this space that's sitting here, we still owe over $2 million on it. So it's not, it's not free space. It's space the taxpayer's going to be paying on for the next 20-some years, 27, 3, 23, 24 years.
Mr. Harvey, this, this council's already voted against that.
I don't know, this council's done a lot of things. I'm just asking, well, this council voted against putting the police department in this town hall. What I'm saying is, could we have one of these, could we add an option of having the, the design and general contractor evaluate this building to see if there's some way that we could make it more usable to get use out of this 2,000 square feet of wasted space?
And I think the conversation me and Tim just had answers that, we would have to exhaust what's in the current RFQ before we could amend it.
We can't, we can't add another option to it?
No, I think, I think you'd have to have a separate RFQ if you did that.
Okay.
So, but I think the attorney would correct me if I'm wrong, once we pick a general contractor, if we exhaust the, what was in the RFQ, we are able to negotiate with the current contractor after that fact.
You can't, yeah, I would agree, you can amend within reason, as, as long as you're not creating, I guess, an unfair situation between those who...
So we'd have to exhaust what was in the current RFQ before we could look at other options.
Okay.
Okay, my question is, we have a fire rating right now, correct?
Yes.
That it could affect our citizens' insurance ratings, could have, their payments could go up if we continue with the fire department like it currently is, is that correct?
So our current rating for the ISO is a three, which is excellent. The lower the number, the better you are. I don't know how it would affect, I'm not an ISO expert. I do know that it, it basically rates you how good you can fight a fire, and how fast you can respond, and the equipment, and the, and the services that you offer. In the current situation that we're in, I would, I wouldn't, I couldn't think of a situation how it would not affect it, you know? The ISO rating to you, to your regular homeowner is not going to affect you that much. You, I, I don't want to throw a number out there, because I, I just don't know. I do know ISO ratings affect your businesses and your industrial customers tremendously. That's, I mean, just to be blunt, that's why you don't see a lot of industrial customers out in the, in the rural county when they don't have fire hydrants. I mean, just to be completely honest, we, the, the insurance is, is a hindrance to that. So every so often, they come out and review. I don't know when we're, we're due, for one. I don't want to talk it up like a, like beetroot juice and then show up tomorrow, but historically, I think the, on average, you're looking at five to six years. If I'm not mistaken, we've had our current rating going on six years, so we're due. I think if, as long as we got a plan in place, I don't think they would nick us for it when they come out. But if they came out and we still don't have a plan in place, I can't sit here in good conscience and say it wouldn't affect it. Now again, I'm not an ISO, I'm not a Department of Insurance expert. There's very few of those in the state. Every, and it seems like every time they get a rating, they, they've changed the rules a little bit. The, the scorecard's changed, you know? I remember, I'm, I'm old enough to remember when you got port, you got, you got a lot of points for, if you have a siren. Now I think you get more points if you got the technology on your hip. So for me to sit here and say I know every single thing about ISO would be a lie, but I do know enough that, that in my, I can't, I can't sit here and say it wouldn't be effective.
So it would behoove us to move forward if we feel comfortable with these, with one of these contractors?
If you're looking at, if, at the end of the day, if you're wanting to, if your goal is to build a fire station and, and come up with a little permanent solution for police, I believe, if you feel you have enough information in front of you, I feel the decision can be made. If you feel that you don't have enough information in front of you, then we, you tell us what you need and we'll get it for you.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, this will stay on the agenda for next week. Item H, consideration of legal review of all town contractual matters from the leasing of space to the vending of food and beverages on town property. Mr. Harvey?
Uh, yes, I've brought, I've brought that one up two or three times in the last few months. And I think Attorney Swanson said that he has done this for the town of Hickory, city of Hickory. Again, we lease the Old Rock Schools to outside parties, third parties. There's no tip, there's no traditional contract of any kind that spells out liability or security. And it leaves the town exposed, which I think could be corrected if we put a standard contract in place. You know, beyond that, all I have is questions, you know, when we have, when somebody wants to sell alcoholic beverages on town property, do we require them to sign an agreement? Do they have to prove they have host liquor liability coverage? You know, these are just questions that I would have for Attorney Swanson. Is this, is this something worth looking at that would maybe protect the town at some point in the future?
Yeah. So I've actually, this week, and I guess it was last week, maybe, when Marissa sent me a, an email on that very issue, and she and I have been working on, and I sent her drafts today, but we've been working on two leases. One is a variation for short-term tenants, so your day rentals. And then there is one that we're working on for your long-term tenants, which I think was earlier on the agenda tonight. And so we've got two working drafts, one of which will immediately come before council, the long-term lease, where we address some of the liability issues, insurance issues, et cetera. And then on the short-term side, too, we have things that will address liability and exposure, insurance requirements, alcoholic beverage permits, what's required. So hopefully, we can check all those boxes. We should have you guys drafts, I'd say, in the next day or two. True, yeah.
So if that's the case, this doesn't really need further action at the June meeting, does it?
I, I wouldn't think so. I mean, typically, you know, a good MO is anytime you have new contracts that are coming up, they come to my desk and they get reviewed, but I think we're pretty good about that. So th, this is just generating a new contract for that particular venue, and I, I think we've got something we can work with. We'll get it to you.
Maybe a bunch of them.
Yeah, I mean, you, you would have separate contracts for any venues or, you know, any type of operation you have, yeah.
So Mr. Harvey, you're saying you want that removed from the agenda?
I'm sorry?
You want that removed from the agenda?
Uh, I guess I don't see any reason to leave, to keep it on there, since it's being worked on. I didn't know it was being worked on.
Okay. Item I will be removed, ma'am. I'm sorry. H, item H. Okay, item I, prudent use of town rolling stock assets. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, the one two is, I just, I think we need to modify our personnel policy to prohibit personal use of town vehicles and personal use of fuel, town purchase fuel. To prohibit personal use of town vehicles and personal use of, uh, fuel, town purchase fuel. I would plan to put that in the form of a motion unless there's some other easier way to handle it.
And the reason for this being what?
Well, uh, the town has a lot of money invested in vehicles. Uh, for town use, and, uh, the town spends a lot of money buying fuel. And I think it's all for the town use, and, uh, over the years, the, uh, prior manager. Maybe managers, uh, used to let employees. At one time, I think there were maybe six or eight employees that just drove vehicles back and forth at home, uh, to home. Uh, that's been reduced greatly, I just think it needs to be eliminated. I mean, I, I can, I, I can put together a spreadsheet to show you what's, the costs is involved, but. Uh, when, when I brought it up with the auditors at, I brought it up to them twice. Uh, last year, they said they didn't see a problem, when I brought it up this year, I pointed out, you know, we're talking about ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year. And auditor Phil Church said, it sounds like that's more than just driving it inside town. He said, we better take another look at that, I don't know if they've taken another look at it or not, but I don't think we're. I don't think we provide these vehicles and this fuel that one or two or three employees. Can use for their personal use. I don't know, most, I, I, to me, it's, it's just always been absurd that the town even permits that. Uh, the state doesn't allow it, uh, most cities that I know don't allow it.
State allows it.
Pardon me?
The state allows it.
A what?
The state does allow it.
No, they don't.
Yeah, they do.
I, I've looked it up, I don't know, I'll send you the reference, the state has a statute that says, pers- uh, there's no personal use.
Personal use, and I think our, uh, our personnel policy addresses that. But driving a vehicle home because you're on call is not personal use.
That's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about personal use, I don't talk about commuting, if it's not, if you're not on call.
Yeah, to, and I, I, I can look at the personnel policy, but most personnel policy restricts town vehicles used to town vehicle. Or someone who's on call. Um, typically, your on-call people or your utility providers and your per- and your emergency personnel. Uh, if you have a, you know, big, if you have a major fire or whatever, fire chief's gotta come back. If you have a major police issue, the police chief's gotta come back, sergeant's gotta come back. If you have a water sewer leak at two o'clock in the morning, those people have to come back. So typically, anyone that's on call or considered to be emergency, you know, response, has a take-home vehicle. I believe there's an ISR, there's a IRS code for it that gets, uh, that gets tagged on to their paycheck. At, or their W two at the end of the year.
It, it's typical for police officers to, uh, take vehicles home, I don't think, that's, that's not an issue at all. Uh, I think, I think in this town, at least the policy used to be, there would be somebody in public works who's on call each week. And he would take the vehicle home, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about somebody who commutes every day. Uh, and the way the town has handled that in the past, it's been, it's, it's varied. Uh, the way, well, I, literally, I just think we need to tighten down. And stop the use of town vehicles, personal use of town vehicles.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with personal use, but commuting back and forth if, if they're on-call or department head. Is standard operating for sewers.
Well, look, if you've got a department head who lives farther away from town than you do, or farther away from town than your assistant manager. Uh, why should they use a town vehicle to report to work? You, or, uh, town fuel, you don't, you don't, uh. You know, we're, 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 we're stretching. You don't wanna address it, I think.
No, uh, I don't wanna, I'm trying how to, I'm trying to think of a. A good way to answer that, uh.
Well, I don't think we need an answer here, what I'm suggesting that this should be a council decision. And that I, that I will bring forward a motion at the June two meeting. And I'll draft it and I'll circulate it like I always do beforehand, and, you know, if there's a reason that the council should. If it doesn't get seconded, it'll die, if it gets, if there's a reason the council should vote it down, it'll get voted down.
Okay, uh, I, I mean, I don't know the situation exactly, but I do, I mean. Most department heads that have take-home vehicles that was, that was hired, that's part of the negotiation package when they was either hired or promoted into that position. Uh, I haven't personally had to deal with that yet here, uh, I do know in formal, uh, locations. That's part of the compensation package, so sometimes would work out a little bit on the salary to lower it, to make up the difference. Uh, I don't know, I haven't had a time to go through and look at.
I know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot really, and if I hadn't researched this pretty deeply, and if I didn't know there was no contract. If I didn't know it was not, uh, covered as, as compensation, I wouldn't have brought it up.
Yeah.
So.
But I do know anybody that takes on a vehicle that's not a police officer, they do have to pay a fee to the IRS for that use.
We don't.
We don't, the employee does, when they file their taxes.
If, if there's a W two filed on it.
Yeah, yeah, and I can, I can make, I can insure that tomorrow, I think it's three dollars a day or something like that, I can't remember. Well, let me rephrase that, twenty years ago, when I had a company, a town vehicle, it was three dollars a day, now it may have changed now.
Again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Mr. Hermsen.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll leave that on the agenda, okay? Item J, consideration of resolution on civility and protocol for the twenty twenty-five municipal election, Mr. Harvey.
Uh, you know, I put this out, Attorney Swanson suggested a resolution. I suggested a minor addition to it, I shared it with everybody a week or so ago, I didn't get any response to it. Uh, so, uh, you know, I'll, I'll put it back out for the agenda packet, I guess. Well, we're, I mean, the basic thing is, since it's live, it's live stream, what we don't wanna do is repeat. The twenty twenty-three campaign scene, which people who lived in the town longer than I have said it was the nastiest campaign they'd ever seen. And it was nasty because the council was involved in it, staff was involved in it, it was inappropriate. And Mr. Hermsen said staff will not be involved in it in twenty twenty-five, uh, which is, I don't, which is great. I didn't think he would let that happen, but, uh, we just need to go on record for our citizens to understand that. We're, we're gonna do better in this year, and we'll be filing, uh, we'll be filing for, uh. There's no July meeting, so the next meeting we have is June two, and then after that, well, there's a June twenty-three. There's June twenty-three meeting, which takes place the July meeting. Uh, but the filing for local elections starts something like July thirteen. But, uh, let's just get a resolution that the council's gonna stay out of it, and we're gonna, uh. We're gonna comply with code of ethics, it's all state regulations. And we need a little bit of clarification on signage also, we've got some of it. Uh, maybe need a little bit more because the UDO changed, uh, changed it a little bit, the unified, uh, development ordinance.
Okay, anybody else? I'm gonna leave that on there for June second. Item K, consideration of citizens' communication, I think that's yours too, Mr. Harvey.
And again, uh, just, I, I would like us to do two things. One is do what we did last year, get, uh, a letter out to the citizens with the water bill. Uh, following the adoption of the budget to let them know what the tax rate's gonna be. And then, second, to consider a monthly, uh, communication, written communication to citizens. Like the town always did, or did for a long time up until September of twenty twenty-three, it just stopped all of a sudden. Uh, but, you know, as we know, not all of our citizens are on the internet, are not all, all on social media. Uh, we, we keep a cashier and a receipt book up here all day long. Every, every day of the week, because a lot of citizens don't even have checking accounts, so they wanna come in and pay in cash and get a receipt. And they're just as important as our high-tech citizens, and, uh, the best way for them to get communication is written. Uh, we have another reason to get another written communication out to them in the next month or so, and that is to tell them. What to do about these trash trolleys that, uh, Republicans are gonna pick up someday and they're gonna get some new ones. So, that's it, two, two things, one is, we had a good letter from the mayor last year that went out. It got out before the tax bills did, I think citizens appreciated that, I hope we can do that again. And then I hope the council will look to doing, uh, regular, monthly written reports to citizens.
Okay, anybody else? We'll leave that on there for June second. Consideration of resolution regarding appointments to town boards, panels, and committees, Mr. Harvey.
Might be me again, I just think we oughta do, Valdez oughta do what Morganton does, and probably a lot of other towns. Uh, make it a requirement, if somebody submits an application to serve. On a, a board or an advisory committee of the council, to be either a resident. Or the owner or manager of a town business. With Morganton's application form, that's the only one I've looked at, it says right at the top, must be a resident of Morganton to apply. And to serve, and that's certainly true with council, and it's true with the planning board. Uh, but it's not for other committees, and I don't think we need to have people with a Morganton address. Or Hickory address, uh, serving on our committees. We have a lot of people who are paying property taxes and Valdez, they're the real residents, and I think are. Uh, we oughta take our advice from them.
So what are we gonna do with the people that are currently on some of these committees that are not residents of Valdez?
We could grandfather them, I suppose, I don't know.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, that'll stay for June second, ma'am. Item M, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, Mr. Hermsen, sir.
Uh, sorry. So, uh, this right here would be, uh, as I understand it, it's just, uh, as a new manager, there's certain boards, uh, that. Uh, I'm automatically deemed, uh, on, and, but. One of the things you gotta do is dot I's and cross the T's, so you gotta formally appoint me to them. And then, uh, there's some other reappointments that need to be done as well. Especially to the, and I've asked Bo how to say this twice, and I've asked you, and I still am just gonna pronounce it right. Vedit, vetted, vetted, um, I'm, I'm gonna learn them all, I promise. Uh, the board is, uh, why, it's a Valdez name and type, it's actually a regional board, so, uh, by their const- uh, charter, I guess it is. They have to have certain members from certain places and certain industries and stuff that, of that nature.
Okay, questions, counsel? We'll leave him on there for June, thank you. Item N, consideration of policy guidelines for citizens and public access to community center facilities, discussion.
Yes, uh, this was brought up at the last council meeting, and council wanted me to come up with a, uh, a way to address it. I, uh, I have included in the package a, uh, proposed pilot program for four months. To allow us to do some, uh, research and rec- gather some data to actually see if, uh. If we need to open it longer, shorter, close it, stuff of that nature. Um, and the reason I proposed it for four months is, we're gonna use part-time employees to do this. And under North Carolina general statute and the legal, and the retirement system, they're limited on how many hours they can use. So we don't wanna have this a long pro- drawled-out process, and then, uh, and then get us in trouble with those part-time employees. So, four months, uh, we're gonna borrow some employees from the rec. department because they're already trusted, they're already known. We already have done background checks on them and everything like that, and they can be trusted to have a key to a building and be inside of it. Uh, and, uh, the rec. director has graciously helped us with, uh, sta- staffing issues. Uh, so, um, I mean, I don't need to get into it all right now, but you have the memo in your agenda.
Okay.
Or you will have the memo in your agenda.
I think it, you, you're talking about the community center, you mean Old Rock School?
Old Rock School, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
So that community center is consideration of policy guidelines for citizens of public access to the Old Rock School?
I believe, yes.
Okay, not the community center.
Well, I think both, I think they're gonna be open both, the community center's already open, so I think the idea was to try to get the Rock School. Open as much as possible on Saturdays.
Okay.
Right now, we're looking at from ten to two, four hours on, every Saturday.
I have a couple parliamentary questions, uh, I, I, I'm, we haven't seen the draft of the amendments yet. But I don't think the council had requested you to do anything. Uh, what, what I think we had was a motion that was seconded and then tabled. So it seems to me that motion would come back on the June two agenda, is that right?
Yeah, I honestly don't recall how it was handled, but assuming that is correct, yes, someone would have to make, make a motion to remove it from the table. You would have a second, vote on that, and then you could take action on it.
Okay, now, second parliamentary question is, uh, I was the mover, I don't remember who the seconder was. But, uh, I'd like to amend that motion, uh. This, what action would that take to be parliamentary or collect?
So I think first you would remove it from the table, and if successfully removed, then anyone can make a motion to amend, and that would be voted on. Be- before the actual motion's voted on.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, what, what you put forth is, is fine, but that's how, you know, and that's, to me, that whole thing is your responsibility. You know, I, I, I don't even have an opinion on it, however you wanna do it is, is up to the manager as far as I'm concerned. So, okay, so that motion really should come back, uh, it was postponed to the June two meeting. So it really ta- it needs a motion to co- to put it on the table, it doesn't just automatically come back?
I would have to review it, I can't.
Okay, yeah, no, no, if it was actually tabled by motion, then there will have to be a motion to remove it from the table.
It wasn't tabled, it was postponed.
It was just tabled, it was tabled for consideration to the next meeting.
It was post, well, the motion was, I think, pretty sure, postponed to the June two meeting.
Okay, why, why don't we review the motion and see how it was made, and then I can answer your question offline, how about that?
You made the motion, didn't you?
Okay.
Okay, item N will stay on the agenda, item N. Item O, status of ongoing or approved projects, sir.
So this is the question I have, 'cause this is my first pre-agenda, do I just tell you what I'm gonna talk about on the June second? Or do you actually wanna update on all three of these?
I think you just tell us what you're gonna talk about.
Well, I'm just gonna give you an update on all three of these next Monday.
Yeah, I don't see a need to repeat it.
All right.
But there is one though, uh, that's not on this list, and that is the, uh, uh. The grant for the, uh, the Bluffs sewer line.
Uh, I believe that, I believe we was looking at that, and we haven't got, uh, we haven't got the information back from. Who was the state agency? DWI to allow us to do anything yet, so we're waiting to hear back from them before we can update council.
Wait, what did you hear from back from who, I'm sorry?
DWI, Divisional.
So the granting agency, DWI, Division Water Infrastructure, we have to get their blessing to go forward with our plan for doing partial proj- project. As much as we can, so that's, that's in the process right now, it's in their hands. It's looking good that they're gonna go ahead and approve that, but we just gotta make sure, 'cause they're the ones that are gonna give us the money, it's a reimbursement grant.
Okay.
So, we don't wanna proceed without their blessing, so we're just waiting on their final word to go ahead and do that.
Okay, so that would be the status report then?
Yeah, hopefully, we'll know that by June twenty-third, so.
Okay, uh, next is the manager's report, and I really don't see need to go through that until next week. Okay, reverting back to tonight's agenda, under item. Okay, reverting back to tonight's agenda, under item five, closed session under North Carolina general statute one forty-three dash three, one eight point eleven A three, to consult with an attorney retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the town attorney and the town council, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And opposed, so be it. And I'll, the audience, that no action will be taken in closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I gotta wait till they get the YouTube back up.
That's what he said. I have moved that we adjourn the meeting.
May have a second?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So be it. See you next week.